Emmerick Cross, Assistant County Administrator. And we're here tonight to speak about the Learn to Swim program. And we have been in collaboration with a couple of other organizations. USD 500, the Greater Kansas City YMCA. And also, this is, this is, this program is going to be funded one year through a grant from the Warner Media and Mr. Dennis Wilson. But I don't want to steal their thunder. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Anna Stubblefield from USD 500 to talk about the Learn to Swim program. Dr. Stubblefield?
Okay, Emmerick, she may have stepped away.
Okay, Mr. Birch, if you want to go, this is Edwin Birch is with USD 500. And Mr. Birch, if you want to go ahead and pick the ball up and get it started.
Yes, thank you. I apologize, Dr. Stubblefield had another Zoom meeting tonight for the Enough is Enough Initiative. So I'm here, so she's trying to do multiple things, which you all understand. But here at KC KPS, USD 500, we are really excited about partnering with the YMCA of Greater Kansas City. Also, the Parks and Rec. I'm looking forward to working with my former colleagues again in a project that will help teach our youth how to swim. We are going to start with a couple of our elementary schools, which will be Whittier and Hazel Grove. It will be part of our after-school program. And we will start there. And then the kickoff is February the 2nd, which I will let Angel and Gary talk more about that. But one of the things I want to say is that when you think about what happened to the young man that unfortunately lost his life, we don't want this to happen again. Learning how to swim and the importance of swimming is something that's really important in the African-American and Hispanic community. Again, this is an opportunity for these organizations to work together in the best interest of our youth. When you think about it, I mean, it's pretty simple. Your residents at the Unified Government are our residents. Our students and parents are your students and parents. We are all in this together. So this is just the beginning of a long partnership to hopefully that we are planning to expand to our other grade levels. This is not the silver bullet right now. This is not the quick fix. But if we can start with our young people, get them engaged, get to that, get them to the point where that, where they are not afraid of being around the water. When you think about it, young people are around water more often than they realize. When you think about many of our creeks and our lakes and things like that. So eventually, we want to expand to our middle schools and then expand to our high schools and eventually create that pipeline where some of the older teenagers can eventually work for Parks and Rec, contribute back to their community, be employed, and maybe become lifeguards. So again, this is the beginning of hopefully other projects and partnerships that we can get into. And I'm just looking forward to be part of it. Our superintendent is looking forward to be a part of it. And our school district is looking forward to this partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Gary Lynn with the Greater Kansas City YMCA. Mr. Lynn?
Thanks, Emmerick, and thanks for the opening, Edwin. Gary Lynn, I'm Senior Vice President of Operations with the YMCA. And excited to be here, excited to be able to talk about this program with all of you. But I think Edwin said it well in that, you know, I don't want to lose sight of the reason we're here. And, and we're here because of a tragedy that took place this past summer. And we're also here because there are organizations and individuals that care enough about the Kansas City, Kansas, community that they're going to ensure that the proper response or the top or proper type of program is put in place to hopefully ensure that a tragedy like that never happens again. So I want to give a lot of credit to Dennis Williams. Dennis is a KCK native. Dennis is sitting in his office in Brooklyn, New York, when the news feed came over about the tragedy. And Dennis said enough is enough. And he was a driving force to convene our group and get us together and start working on building a program that hopefully somewhere down the line is a program that allows every child in the Kansas City, Kansas, community, regardless of their location, regardless of their family experience, regardless of their background, has the opportunity and the access to be able to access a quality swim lesson. And that is our goal. And this is the start of it. We're excited to start with these couple of schools. And we'll kick off this program on February the 2nd. Then we're going to move to two more schools. And we're going to keep working until we identify funding, resources, staffing, so we can, so we can put this type of program in place. None of the partners up here feel like this is a one and done. This is not something we're going to do for 2022 and then think that we hit, reached the finish line because we have not. This is an ongoing thing that not only do we have to work at the program and work at educating the kids and the families about the importance of this, but we're also going to work at identifying the funding and everything. So I very much appreciate working with these partners that are a part of this process. I think we have, we've not only worked together to put in place what I think is a great start to this program. I think, at least I have learned, that we also are stronger together. And I think that this program is going to be an incredibly impactful program when it's put in place and it reaches its full potential. But I think we've also learned that it isn't just a Learn to Swim program that I think our three organizations can come together and work on. And I think you're going to see, hopefully, you're going to see us leaning more on each other and opportunities to be able to impact the community in multiple, multiple ways. So again, appreciate the school district, appreciate the Parks and Rec and, and Emmerick and UG and everything for, for what they've done. But we are kicking off the program February the 2nd. Again, it's a 12-week Learn to Swim program where we're working with the kids in the Kid Zone before and after-school program at two of the schools that we've identified. We'll start with that group. We'll teach them a quality swim lesson over the course of 12 weeks. And then we'll move to two other schools. And then we'll kind of reconvene and figure out what we're going to do for the summertime and identify some schools for the fall as well. I think the last thing I'll really talk about, then I'll, I'll turn it over to Angel from Parks and Rec to talk a little bit about it, is it is no small feat to staff a program like this, right? And you talk about, I've been in the YMCA for over 21 years. And all part of that 21 years, I've been in, in programs where we've had to identify and recruit lifeguards and swim lessons and individuals that can help put on a program like this. And COVID has impacted in many ways, but recruiting individuals to be lifeguards and swim lesson instructors are at the very top of the list. And so I'm excited to say we are about 85% of the way there on staffing for this program, close enough to feel good about being able to kick the program off. But I also think about as we go into the future and expand on this program, expand on our summer programming, you know, I, I think the opportunity to work with the school district and the Parks and Rec to, to help solve, and I don't know that we're ever going to solve it, but to help to lean on each other and, and overcome some of these staffing issues is going to be a big part of how keeping this program sustainable and moving forward. So I know that's something not everybody thinks about when you're kicking off an impactful program like that, but that has been a major hurdle for us to overcome and one that I don't want to, don't want to shed too much, make too much light of. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Angel and then stick around for any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. Again, also, I just want to take a second to thank the YMCA, thank USD 500, and also thank Warner Media. This is so important to our community. I can remember, I think it was back in 2018, meeting with prior USD 500 leadership at the time and with Commissioner Townsend and some county administrators and, you know, trying to get a program like this off and running. And, you know, COVID posed a lot of challenges, but to be able to be here today with all of our organizations working together and talking about this pilot program and how we're launching it is amazing. So, you know, just really want to thank everybody again, the support that we've had from leadership and commissioners, and then also our partners here locally in the community just coming around and, you know, making this happen. So a little bit too about our efforts and what we're doing in Parks and Recreation is, is what we found in years past, whenever we would go out to the high schools to recruit for lifeguards for the summers, you know, we would come back from our recruitment efforts during their lunch periods with a list of about, you know, 20 to 30 kids who were interested in being lifeguards. So we knew that the desire was there to fulfill these summer jobs. But what we ended up finding out after, you know, we did some digging, talking to the students and, you know, making those calls and asking kids why they weren't showing up to the conditioning is, you know, they didn't have the skill of swimming. So while this is a pilot program, this pilot program is so important. And like Gary said, we're going to keep building on that to continue to have more of these programs for our community. So, you know, we can build the pipeline of lifeguards and give them the opportunity to have these summer jobs and work right in our own community and then, you know, continue to serve right here locally. So we're super excited about that. As you know, two years having Parkwood Pool closed did pose some challenges. And so we are really ramping up our efforts this year on recruitment. Last year, we did try to run a lifeguard work study, so I will talk a little bit about that because I think it ties in nicely with what Mr. Lynn was saying about how, you know, getting lifeguards and staffing for these programs can be a challenge because it's such an important position to have. So last year, we did run the lifeguard work study program and passed out roughly 75 applications. And from those 75, we had 10 of them submit to HR. Then we worked with HR on contacting those applicant, there's those applicants, getting them down to Parkwood for pre-test. We had seven applicants show up to Parkwood. And then by the time the pre-test was done that day, the WSI instructor said, you know, only three of them really had the skill to go on to lifeguard training. So we sent the three to lifeguard training paid for by the UG. And then out of those three, only one attended both days and passed. So as you can see, you know, it's very difficult sometimes to, you know, get qualified lifeguards because it's a super important job and it's becoming increasingly more important even with the challenges with COVID. And I, I believe, Emmerick, if you're able to share that flyer, we're really excited. We've been working really closely with Ashley Hand's team. She's done an amazing job, her and her team, on helping us with recruitment efforts, getting distribution lists ready, preparing marketing materials, just really getting this information out everywhere. So I'm sharing with you all tonight our flyer for recruiting for lifeguards. So we are beginning, starting today, the jobs hit, the job board to get online and apply for these jobs. So as you can see on the screen, it is going to be a very great, robust program. We did some research and we thought really long and hard about this and worked very closely with Mayor Garner and his staff as well to make sure that we were going to be paying our lifeguards very competitively, competitively to those in the metro. So we're very proud to say that we're going to be paying our lifeguards $15 an hour this summer. That is, if not the highest hourly salary in the metro. And so also, along with that, we really want to show our guards and our staff how much we appreciate them and how important this is to our community. So we will also be offering incentives for our guards that stick with us. So we are looking to do a $100 bonus mid-season for those guards that are still with us and good standing. And then also, at the end of the season, we're going to do a $200 bonus. And again, this has been a team effort by multiple departments, multiple organizations. So we're just really excited to be able to get this going. So we'll send this flyer out, start helping us spread the word if you can. If you know anyone isn't interested, definitely send them our way because we are going to do everything we can to make sure we have adequate staffing for the summer. Again, it, I guess, just can't say enough how thankful we are for the partnership with YMCA and USD 500 and Warner Media coming together. And, and we've already been discussing opportunities for the future and how we can continue to partner and offer more programs to our community.
Thank you, Angel. Mr. Mayor Emmerick Cross, Assistant County Administrator. I'd like to take this opportunity, we're going to get you and the commissioners a lot of flyers, and we hopefully send it out to all the agencies and all the contacts you have. We're going to have USD 500 helping us with this as well. And the YMCA, we're looking at every, about every organization and agency we have in this community to get the word out. Before Memorial Weekend, we're looking for strong swimmers. We're looking for those folks who can work with us at a great salary and, and be lifeguards and, and work for their community and give back. And this is an important program to us. We're asking for everybody's help, all those folks online tonight watching this. If you know somebody who wants to be a lifeguard, we're going to put these out online real soon and, and hand them out. And please call Tyrone Weaver at the bottom or Human, or Human Resources or HR Department. And if you know somebody who wants to be a lifeguard, we'll take a look at everybody. So with that, Mayor, appreciate the honor to present tonight to the commission. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson, you may be muted. We'll come back to Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. All my heart is bursting with anticipation because of this program. So let me start off with some very sincere thank yous. And I'll start outside the family. Mr. Lynn, I look forward to meeting you and talking offline about the possibility of sponsoring some kids to learn how to swim. That's how deeply concerned is the wrong word, but, but I, I know how I enjoy it. And if Commissioner Johnson wants to put the picture back up there of Sumner High School, of which I'm a proud graduate in the northwest part of Owandat. I learned to swim and many of my classmates learned to swim there at Sumner. So as Ms. Oberst said, it was back in 2019 when she and former Administrator Doug Bach and I paid a visit to the then superintendent, his assistant, and the CFO of the Unified School District to, to impress upon them the link that learning the swimming skills at the high school level has on being able to put a pool of applicants to the pool of our lifeguards to make that challenge or that connection. So I am so appreciative of Mr. Wilson and you and our brother there, Mr. Edwin Birch, formerly of Unified Government, to have someone who knows what this means there at Unified Government. I've also met with the, the current superintendent to make that pitch. So we, we have to start somewhere. And I am appreciative of Mr. Wilson and Mr. Lynn's efforts as well as the Unified Hundred School District, 500 School District, to start off somewhere with these young kids. So now, just so everyone is clear, we need 16-year-olds up to staff the pool, just so everyone is clear about that. So I would like to hear a little bit more of the details about the Learn to Swim, what schools are going to be involved and the age groups there, just so the public knows. Because you got to start these kids, and the sooner you can start kids swimming, the more likely they'll overcome that fear. I was 15 when I learned how, and I'll never forget how my breath was taken away when I started in the pool, but I was just determined to learn. But the earlier you can start that, the better off you are with the kids. So what are the schools? What are the ages? How many times a week will that program go on? I do believe, I heard you say it'd be 12 weeks. So if you could talk a little bit about those details of the program?
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bet.
I would just mention the schools again. We're starting with our, our elementary schools is Whittier and Hazel Grove. And Gary, did you want to go into the details?
Yeah. And Commissioner, you were right on track in that the earlier you can introduce a, a child to water and get them comfortable in the water, it is absolutely the best, the best medicine for teaching them lifelong swimming and everything. So, so yeah, Edwin was right. We're going to start off with Whittier and Hazel Grove. We're working with the Kid Zone kids of this pilot program. So Kid Zone is ages, basically eight groups, grades kindergarten through fifth grade. So we're going to have a variety of kids and different ages, and we'll work with them in group swimming lessons based on their ability, a little bit based on their age and just their, you know, their ability to, to understand and listen and some of those type of things. I believe we're starting with two times a week, and it'll be a six-week program. And then we go twice a week with another group for the following six-week program. And so that's how it's going to be initially. And then we're going to identify another school. I don't, sorry, I'm in remote today and I don't have all the details of what the next two schools are that we're kicking off right away after that. But it's two of the other schools that are, that have Kid Zones grades K through five. But I'll definitely have those details. And then on our February 2nd event, we'll have all the details out and we'll make sure that it's part of the presentation. One of the things we want to make sure that the, the families of the Kid Zones know, parents that they know, is that their schools are on our list, right? We are identifying and trying to figure out a way now to, how do we get every school to be able to go through this? And so we're not going to leave a school out.
That, that's great news, great news to hear. Let me also say that starting young with the kids helps them not just to become acquainted in the pool and what that feels like, but I'm sure it will also help them to appreciate other aspects outside the pool of water safety. And that gets us to the sad situation we had last week. There has to be a respect for, you know, the exterior of the pool, you know, when it's open, when it's closed. So I think starting younger will also help kids become more aware and familiar with the external, not just what goes in the pool, but what you should or should not be doing even before you get in the water. So I look forward to that. And I look forward to working with you to try to sponsor some of our older kids. So we have a pool in the pool for lifeguards. And I, I wanted to extend an appeal to all the people who came to Parkwood last June. Beat the bushes and, and, and let's try to identify and get in the hands of kids who may be lifeguards or interested in at these applications. Now you know, let, let's not hear, well, I didn't know. Now we know, we all want Parkwood Pool open, but you can't open any pool without qualified lifeguards. So I look forward to, to that. COVID allowing, let me put it that way as well. COVID allowing. Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you on the 2nd. Mr. Lynn, Mr. Edwin Birch, alumni of Unified Government and good friend to the Unified Government. Thank you very much. Thank you. In her absence, our superintendent of schools.
Doctor.
I know she's, she's trying to do so many things at, at one time. And I want to thank the ongoing efforts to make things different. We are really trying to do the best we can to make things different for our community last year from our Parks and Rec, Mr. Cross and Ms. Oberst, Mr. Webb, Ms. Shelley Boyd, Mr. Watson. Thanks to all of these people who are working behind the scenes continuously. We only have, what, maybe three months of swimmable weather, but there's planning going on all the time. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Before I go, Commissioner Johnson, I know you had your hand up. Do you want to speak?
Only if you can hear me now.
Yeah, yeah, you go for it and I'll go after you.
Well.
We can hear you go forth.
You have to figure out how to work this technology. Thank you. And I, I think my fellow Commissioner Townsend really had said a lot that I was intending on saying. I, I will say that increasing the hourly pay was, was a necessity this summer. I had some, just opportunity to do some aquatic lessons. And I had a chance to talk to the, the lifeguards there, and they said they were starting them at $11 an hour. And at the time, I believe we were at somewhere around nine. And so that really puts us in a much more competitive space now with the $15 an hour. And I'm just thankful to all the persons that have already been acknowledged. That puts us, that note, just knowing that that puts us in a very competitive landscape now where we can go out and try to be able to obtain the very best persons that will get qualified and be part of this. So with that, I'll yield the floor and thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I was just going to say real quickly, because I think I'm going to be Commissioner Stites to this, right? Turner, Bonner, Piper, also more than welcome, all of Owandat County, more than welcome, right, to participate and to be a part of this, to swim, to apply. So just want to put that, and I look forward to participation in collaboration, not just with KCKPS, but with all the other school districts, with Turner, Bonner, Piper as well. So just wanted to put that out there because I thought I could see Commissioner Stites about to say that. But along with that, and I know we talked about it earlier, so either Angel or Emmerick, is there a residency requirement for the lifeguard position? Can you all just clarify who can apply to be a lifeguard?
No, there is no residency requirement. This is Emmerick Cross, Assistant County Administrator. We're looking for lifeguards. And it's a seasonal position, so there's no residency requirement. Commissioner Davis?
Okay, just wanted to make that clear for the public, everybody. So if you're living in KC Mall, if you live in Johnson County, whatever, like, more than welcome. I just wanted that to be clear to the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stites?
Commissioner Stites, District 7. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. You are absolutely correct. I got a list here and Bonner Springs and Edwardsville and District 204 was on my list. And first off, I want to say to Mr. Lynn and Ms. Oberst and all the other folks that, that I, just recently being elected, haven't been through this process, but, and I want to say, nice to work you with you again, Edwin, and seeing you again. Thank you very much. But we have to do whatever needs to be done so that I hope and pray we never have to experience such a horrific tragedy that occurred. I, I commend you guys for the hard work that you're doing. We can save one more child, it's so important. And anything that I can do at my position to help further this cause, I'm here. When, when you said that there was no school that's going to be left behind, what, what are the plans for Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Yeah, so let me talk real quick about Bonner Springs. So we actually do already have a Learn to Swim program with second graders in the Bonner Springs School District that we, we operate right there at the Bonner Springs Y. And so with that program, every second grader through the course of a school year goes through that Learn to Swim program. And I think we've been able to have that in place. Actually, it's been seven or eight years, I think, that we've had that in place. Like, we paused it last year due to COVID, but it is back in place and that'll continue. The other ones, you know, I think we've worked so hard to get this off the ground as a pilot program. You know, we want it to be sustainable. I said before, nobody up here thought that this was going to be a one and done program. But I'd be honest and transparent that we haven't flushed out everything for, for the years 23 and 24 and 25. But we also, I don't think it's necessarily to flush out years three through five before we get it off the ground. And so this is how we're starting, but it is also, I'll confirm, it's just a start. But as we, as we start sharing some of the success stories, as we start seeing some of the kids become such talented swimmers, and then, then maybe somewhere down the line, they can start moving into lifeguards. If we can, we can do them at a certain age and some of those other type of things, then I think we can make some future plans in place. then I think we can make some future plans in place and identify some funding. That's always going to be a need, is identifying the funding. Appreciate Commissioner Townsend, I will definitely talk to you on the second about sponsoring some kids that we can do year-round there, so that'd be great. But yeah, I'll just be transparent, we haven't flushed out all the years coming forward, but I'm excited that we're going to get it kicked off the ground. But we're also, we're not done working at this.
Well, I appreciate that, and I agree. We have to start somewhere, and it starts with the first step. And I, again, thank you very much for what you all have done, and I look forward to this program for many, many years to come. Thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angel and Emmerich, I'm sure you can always hear my voice every time you give a Parks and Rec representation in your head of how excited I am for this. And I'm, thank you for everything you do for our Parks and Rec. Thank you, Mr. Birch and Mr. Lynn, for coming into this collaboration and coming together. It's amazing. During COVID, our Parks Department got CARES Act money, $2 million. Angel, please correct me if I'm wrong, it was $2 million. And they did a lot of work within four months. It shows with our Parks, our Parks Department has shown time and time again, if they're given the resources and if they're given the money, they can do the work. They can create programs, they can put more stuff out there for our community. And this is another example of that. Giving them the resources and the connections and the collaborations to pull together a program like this is amazing. And this is, as Commissioner Stites said, this is just the first step. You know, we have a long way to go. And the whole commission knows that Parks and Rec is a very big part of my heart. I worked for, worked in it for six years over in Johnson County in our after-school programs. I know what Parks and Rec can do for our community. And so I cannot thank you enough to everyone who has worked on this. You know, we had a lot of, we had a lot of attention when we had closed Parkwood Pool. But we had closed it for a reason because, one, of COVID, and, two, we didn't have the staff. We didn't have the lifeguards to be able to safely have kids in it. And I'm going to do anything and everything I can to get applicants for our lifeguards. I'm going to talk to everybody, I'm going to pass it around to organizations that are within my district. I'm going to post it as much as I can on Facebook. People may get annoyed by it, but until we get applicants in, I'm going to do everything that I can. So I'm very, very excited for this. I can't wait to see where it goes, what are the next steps? It's exciting. So thank you again, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Birch, Jack, Angel, and Emmerich, for everything you do. We owe it to you, this community owes it to you for everything that you do for our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor, again. Commissioner Townsend. Wanted to follow up on or expand on something that Commissioner Johnson had said about the increase in the rate of pay. We are truly, I guess, will be one of the highest-paying employers with respect to lifeguards. And it is a dogfight out here for it that still, it's still going to be highly competitive because as you heard Mr. Lynn say earlier, everybody's trying to get those certified instructors and lifeguards. But I do want to say that we had been on this road since 19. The last time we had lifeguards and the kids were able to swim and in our pre-COVID life, those were the days. We were then paying our lifeguards a little bit more than $9 an hour, and we were competitive at that time. But because we could see how much more it would take in terms of attracting lifeguards, we were prepared to pay them $12 an hour last year. So this has been an upward climb for several years. And but for COVID, that is the rate that, you know, our lifeguards would have been paid. And I have to say and just commend what I call the Parkwood Posse. Baywatch had nothing on them, because you had dedicated young people who were there for $9 an hour and a good tan and some, you know, free hamburgers every now and then. The Commissioner Townsend would treat them too, but they were very dedicated. And we didn't have any problems in terms of loss of life when those kids were there and the pool was open during its regular hours. So again, teaching kids respect for the pool and the surroundings, whether they're wet or not, will be, I'm sure, a great outcome also of the program that will be conducted at the Y. So again, I look forward to meeting and seeing you on the second. One last thing, either Ms. Obert or Mr. Cross, if someone would come to you now, come to us now and say, look, I really want to be a lifeguard, not sure about my swimming skills, do we have anything lined up that could help them right now?
Yeah, I'll take that one, Commissioner Townsend. We are still looking for a WSI instructor to help facilitate the conditioning that took place prior to COVID. The staff member that we had before is no longer working in that capacity. And so we are reaching out to a couple contacts to see if they would be available to assist us with that. And then we are also having some really good conversations with YMCA on also bridging that gap and also being able to help us out in that area. And so I'm working on getting more information on that, but I feel pretty confidently that we will have something in place for that. But, you know, as of right now, like Emmerich said, we are, our message is that we are recruiting strong swimmers until we are able to have that staff member or resource in place for those interested, that need a little bit more exposure and conditioning.
Thank you. And so I guess the message is, you come and see us if you are interested. And, you know, we'll go from there. I guess that's the bottom line. Again, you must be 16, but you come and see us. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, hopefully I can answer your last question. Ms. Obert, if you get with Laverne Murray, he may have that person that's certified to train. That could probably be of assistance to the Unified Government in that regard. So I'll pass it along to him, and hopefully you all can have that communication. I'd just like to make some comments in this regard. I was out this summer, this past summer in 2021, when the pool was closed. And I think what resonated to me was a community coming together and saying that they wanted to have their pool open. Watching those young folks out there when it was about 95 degrees, seeing water in the pool and the pool not being open was concerning to me. There were a lot of variables as to why the pool wasn't open. But moving forward, I can truly say that this commission, this mayor, this Unified Government staff, I want the community to know, we've heard you. You spoke loudly, and I can tell you that what you've seen tonight is a collaboration like anything you've ever seen. When you talked about the commitment from your administrator in regards to pay and salary and your commissioners, the Unified Government staff, as well as this public-private partnership that you're seeing that's unprecedented, to come together to try and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community, not only just to provide recreational opportunities or to enhance the quality of life for our residents, when we talk about the only public pool in the entire Kansas City, Kansas proper area. But this is more importantly, and you've heard that from the onset, it's about saving lives. And to me, that's the most important thing. I just want to give a shout out, and just, I'm going to name some names of some of the frontline people that I've identified that have really led this charge. When you talk about USD 500 and Superintendent Dr. Stubberfield and Edwin Birch and Gary Lynn, Angel Obert, Mr. Wilson, Ashley Hand, Crystal McFeathers, Laverne Murray from my office. Really trying to get that pipeline of workforce-ready individuals at some point that can really meet the needs that we have in our community. I applaud Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Stites for saying, this isn't just something that's restricted to Kansas City, Kansas, but, you know, this is about Windat County. When you talk about Bonner Springs, Edwardville, Turner, Piper, and then people outside of Windat County. We want qualified, we need qualified lifeguards to come provide a needed service right here in Windat County. I haven't heard, I know the age minimum was 16, but I don't believe there's any age limits based on what the actual qualifications are. So I know we talk a lot about our youth, but we need our adults to step forward and be willing to provide that service as well for our young people. So what you've seen tonight is that you're seeing a commitment from all these stakeholders doing everything to make a difference. The community needs to know that they are that difference. We can't do this alone. And I'm asking you, as your mayor, to please be that difference and help getting the word out. We're going to do our part to make this happen. That same energy that I seen when I was out there this last summer of people coming together and saying what we want. And it's easy to talk the talk, but I'm asking this community to start walking the walk. Push forward this information, cooperate with your Unified Government. We need you. We can't do this alone. We can pull all the levers, we can increase the salary, we can provide the leadership, the guidance, come up with the logistics in place. But ultimately, it's up to the community to step forward and say, this is our swimming pool, this is our community, the Unified Government's done their part, let's do our part so our children and our adults can have a swimming pool that they can utilize when it's 95 degrees outside, as opposed to standing outside looking at a pool that's closed because we just don't have the personnel, lifeguards there to make that a reality. So I challenge, and my call to action to this community, is what you've seen tonight is an unprecedented effort by your leadership with a public-private partnership along with your school district, when you talk about USD 500, to do their part. I challenge this community to meet us where we are to make sure that our kids have those opportunities to have a swimming pool that we all want them to have come the summer of 2022. So I want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved in this effort. The work doesn't stop, it continues. But we really need our community to step up and help all these folks that are really putting in a lot of effort and time and energy and money behind this effort to make opening Parkwood Pool a reality. So thank you all so very much.